Are ready? All right, council meeting is back in session. We are starting with the general budget overview.
We've got one, one point of business that we need to take care of real quick.
Okay.
In addition to the resolution having been adopted, there is one act that still needs to be carried out. Need authorization from the council for that to be done. It can be signed by the city manager. It is the actual certification of the role to the tax collector's office. We have that form available and it's ready. We would just ask that council approve the certification of the fire assessment role to the tax collector.
So moved.
So moved.
Do we have a, are you seconding my motion?
If that's what it is, yes, it is.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there questions on that?
Just as a point of order, whenever, whenever somebody, two people move at the same time, just like one as the mover and the second one is automatically as a second.
I didn't know he was making a motion. Now I know he's making a motion. I second that motion.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Spurlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Anything else Ricky?
Not, not related to fire assessment. I think we're good there.
We'll get to you next very soon.
So we're going, we're going to the general budget now. Obviously, the point of tonight is to make any changes that we need to make so that we will hopefully have something that will be able to be passed at our next council meeting, at our next budget hearing. So, I guess, what do, what do we have that, that you can't live with? Let's start there. We'll go down the line, starting with Stanley.
I ain't saying nothing.
Okay.
I would like to make a statement if we're going to be on the page one, right?
Page one.
Okay.
Of the details page?
Okay, that's city council.
Okay.
I had asked that we be allowed to get back on the insurance for the city because we haven't had that. That was a benefit provided to the city council and as time has gone by, we all know people had employers that paid for it. And I'd like for the city council to have that added back in.
The insurance or the fund for the insurance?
Um, health insurance, just like they used to get.
What would be entailed in that?
That would be us.
Monetarily wise.
I don't know. That's the question. I don't know what the current rate is.
Ricky, what would something like that cost?
Based on the information that was provided to us by our insurance carrier, the rate for next year would be $5,889 per year, per employee.
Per each one of us?
Yes.
Five thousand eight hundred?
Five thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Okay.
And you could make that optional? We could put that in if you'd like and make it as an option.
For me, I prefer an option because I already have insurance.
Considering how much we get paid, I don't think that would be a wise decision. That's more than any of us get paid, probably close to double. What does a council member make?
Two fifty a month.
As much as you do.
Well, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
But not by much.
I'm sorry.
Why'd you say five thousand? What was that for council member?
Five thousand eight hundred eighty-nine dollars.
Eight hundred thirty-nine dollars.
And so that comes out to twenty-nine thousand four hundred and forty-five for the whole year for five people.
Are you making that motion Maria?
Well, what I'd like to say is, I mean, you know, if, if, if the council opted that, okay, right now you get a stipend of whatever, two fifty, three hundred, depending how many meetings you get.
Yeah.
Right? Other communities pay both those same things. We had it. It disappeared only because people already had their insurance and their employers paid for it and it went away. But it's always been there. We should still have that option. That should have never gone away.
Could we have the option to where we would be given a portion of that to use to buy the insurance of our choice?
Well, that would be, that was the question also that I could, if you got the funds for that instead, then yeah, you could.
Well, I, I understand where the mayor's coming from. That's pretty much doubling our salary.
You're just voting for yourself to get a raise. That's all it is. It's not that complicated.
Yes. And so I, I think it'd be more realistically if we maybe cut that in half to use it. If anybody thinks that's.
Do what, Jim? You're chewing your words. I'm not hearing you.
Okay. We all may or may not have insurance and we may all, probably all pay something out of our pocket for insurance. So instead of just saying that we all get insured by the city or the exact dollar amount, why can't we just say we'll get a fixed amount that we would use towards us paying for the insurance of our choice?
Why don't we just keep it as is and get on with it?
You could do that too.
I made the motion that we get the same money paid to us as the city employees get for theirs. The four hundred and eighty-nine dollars or fifty-eight hundred dollars a year is what it's going to cost. Fifty-eight eighty-nine is what he said. I'm sorry. That's the motion I make for us, not the city employees. I'm wrong. Fifty-eight eighty-nine for our insurance.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
No, that's what I was suggesting, so I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
The one issue I would have with that besides what the mayor's comments were is that this council voted not to increase the tax mileage. And so even though it only comes out to less than thirty thousand dollars, that's another access to the budget. I, I, if we're going to do anything, I'd rather see something more reasonable instead of just jumping full speed ahead.
Well, what we could do is put it in there and then go through the budget and then we'd shake out what's at the end if it doesn't come back and revise it. I mean, that's totally doable.
You know, I tell you.
I don't know that you need a motion to change it right now. You can just make the suggestion. We do that with all the other line items and we haven't made motions for every single line item in here.
No, the motion's already been made and seconded.
I'll, I'll say this. I, do I think that we could use a raise in pay? Absolutely. I, I think our, the rest of our city, most of us council members are hourly rate is a dollar twenty-five an hour. That is something that I started out working when I, one of my first or second job as a teenager sixty years ago, approximately. So a dollar twenty-five per hour is really a low cost. And if I looked at anything, I always thought that, I even, even as a citizen suggested it in a podium that the city council would get a raise of doubling that amount to two fifty an hour for most of the council and whatever the extra amount, the city manager. And that does not come out to anything near even a thousand dollars, I don't think. So I, I think that to ask for, like, I agree with the city man, I mean, the mayor that we're asking for doubling our salary through the insurance. I think that that's way out of line. I, I, I could see something a lot less than that, but that's, it doesn't mean I don't think we deserve it, especially after the last several meetings. But I think that's just a hard pill to swallow for the citizens and taxpayers to see that we're funding over this budget over about six or eight meetings and all of a sudden we basically double our salary through an insurance loophole. I just don't think that that's satisfactory, in my opinion.
We had asked for this information way back when as well, so anyway.
If you're going to speak, you have to come to the podium, sir. Your name and address again, please.
Houston F. Hall, eight twenty West Pleasant.
Yes, sir.
A citizen. Yes, Jim, I understand what you're saying and it's as simple as this. It would appear as concealment to a citizen. And you're exactly right. I'm a citizen. It would appear to be concealment inadvertently giving yourself a raise and calling it insurance. You're right. You're exactly right. Just basically the justice.
Hey, okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Spurlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
No.
Mayor Anderson?
Absolutely not.
Motion passed three to two.
All right. So that was page one. Is there anything else on page one?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay.
We, at a very first budget meeting, I think it was brought up that the, somewhere put in the budget that the council attend the Florida League of Cities conferences again. Did we do that?
Good question. Have we attended the Florida League of Cities conferences?
No.
Okay.
No, I said the funds, it was asked that the funds be put back in so that we could attend them.
Okay.
And, and my question is, is it in here?
Do we have adequate funding in there for that?
You have five thousand dollars in travel and per diem.
Each or for all of us?
That's for total.
Total?
Do you feel that's adequate to do the trainings and attend those conferences?
I think it's more than enough. I think it's more than enough.
More than enough.
And we, and no, but everybody don't go all the time anyway.
Yeah, it's usually one or maybe two.
The two schools I go to every year are probably running around three thousand total. I mean, I'm going to school October sixth.
But that's your pension, is it not?
Yes, but it's still training that the city pays for.
I thought the pension paid for that.
No, they do not.
Okay.
It comes out of the city. So the, the, I just turned in the figures. It's six hundred and seventy dollars for the class. But I don't know exactly what their hotel is, but it's usually around a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars a night. And then, of course, you also have mileage and per diem.
So that was your twelve hundred in the F eighteen nineteen actuals? Because you're the only one, I think, that went, right?
That could be right.
Okay, so I mean, that actually, if, if only, I mean, I don't know. I'll keep on deferring to those.
The one that you just registered for?
Uh huh.
Did we already pay that?
No.
Okay.
I'm waiting on a check. I just turned in to Danielle this week, I think.
For the per diem?
Yes, and.
I signed it today.
Do you know what that was?
It was two hundred and something?
Yeah.
Pennies.
Around two hundred and fifty bucks.
Those hotels.
Okay. Well, but what, my point is, is if you've already registered for the thing, it would come out of this year's budget, not next year's anyway.
No one's gone, I don't think.
I'm, I am already registered. But it, but it's registered effective, the check is, I have, if the check is paid for this year's budget, but it doesn't, I don't, I don't turn it into the sixth of October.
Yeah. It's negligible anyway. All we're talking about doing is just making the budget, you know, to have room in there. So do we want to add another, you know, a thousand dollars to it? And be done with it?
I don't plan on going anywhere next year that I'm aware of. So, you know, Brenda might want to go. You might want to increase that.
So, a thousand dollars?
No, fine.
Okay. It's just, it's a budgeted amount. If it doesn't get used, obviously, it's not going to disappear, so.
Okay.
Okay. So you got that change, a thousand dollars added to the travel and per diem?
Sorry.
All right, page two?
Nope.
There was a, yes, page two. I'm sorry, but there was another discussion about the city manager's raise. Did we fix that or how was that handled or?
It's a three percent across the board is what's in here.
Is that what it is?
Okay, so that, that sounds like a separate issue we need to decide is do we want to have that three percent raise or not? It's been discussed a couple of times.
I'll just leave it in there.
For all employees?
Well, that, I don't know what the bottom line was on the total amount on that because that will be forever and ever and ever. So did you have a figure on what that amount would be total for all the employees getting a raise at three percent?
Why would that be?
Oh, is that what that is?
Why would that be perpetual?
Because it's a cost of living. So next year, it's going to be an increase to the, to the payroll.
Last year was a one-time only three percent. It wasn't a COLA.
We didn't give them a COLA last year?
When June Fisher was here, that city manager.
It was a one-time.
It was a one-time three percent raise across the board to all employees, a one-time only. It was not a cost of living.
I don't know. I think it carried over to the next year.
No, it didn't.
Everybody had a funky number in there with, you know.
But I don't, I don't see why it carries forward. I mean, you can change it.
I thought COLAs were that. Are you saying three percent raise just for the employees and that's that?
She's on page three of it.
Or are you talking three percent COLA which is in there for perpet, for perpetuity?
I think it was just a one-time raise.
You're not changing personnel manual. You're not changing a contract. You're just simply saying for purposes of budgets, we're going to pay them whatever the cost of living increase is, which you go to the website and see what that is.
I get, which means that in two thousand twenty, twenty-one, that three percent will still be in there. And then if you get another three percent, it's going to be that much more. So I mean, it just compounds on itself. Are you, are you saying that it's three percent just for one year and it goes away the following year? Or does it increase your pay for that position forever?
What you're talking about is the difference between a COLA adjustment and a.
A one-time pay increase.
Performance?
There's a term for it.
Performance?
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 Well, performance would carry forward as well.
Yeah.
But what?
I'd rather not have it as performance.
I'm trying to think of the word.
It's for life.
It's a bonus. That's what I was looking for.
But you can't give.
What you're talking about is giving a one-time bonus.
You can't give bonuses. They're prohibited by law. You can't, you can't give bonuses. They're, they're prohibited by statute.
Okay.
So it'd have to be the COLA or performance. But if you give it performance, you see the, the irony there is if you have somebody you have to terminate that is doing a really pitiful job, then later on they can say, but I just got an increase for my performance just a month ago.
Yep.
Well, could we do what, what Ricky said last time, which was put it in a contingency account and then performances are done and the three percent is in there?
I don't see why you can't do a cost of living one time. You just go to the cost, the, the website, US, I can't forget the, the website and you look up what, what the COLA is for that year for wages and salaries.
VLS.
And, and, and then you say what, that's, oh, that, that's what it is. That's how much we increased them this year. Bang, that's it. Then next time, you put it in the budget if you want to or not.
I think it's two percent or less right now.
I don't see why it's permanent. I mean, I, I, I don't work on budgets, as I've said before many times, but there's no contract. There's no, there is no personnel manual change. You're not promising it to somebody and on the hiring, I don't see how it becomes permanent.
You make the decision as a budget item.
Yeah.
Yeah. So do we want to give a three percent raise?
So next year, everyone will have the same budget amount and then there can be another three percent for that year, is what you're saying, right?
Yeah, we just make the same decision.
It won't be three percent on top of this three percent.
No, you just simply make the decision next year, do I want to have a COLA this year? Well, no, you know, I mean, I've had cities that, I, you know, I've been at their budget meeting and they've said, no, we're not going to give a cost of living because we can't afford it this year.
Yeah. Do you know what that total number is? About three percent?
I don't have that number in front of me, but I.
You probably know roughly what our total payroll is in, in millions.
Total payroll is roughly two point eight million, I think, is what it is.
Okay. So it's a considerable amount of money.
I got a cost of living rate once for ten percent. Yes, well, I've been around a long, long.
Are you doing it?
Yeah, I'm trying to make sure I have the right number of zeros in here.
And it was part of the contract and they took it out the following year.
Should be two point eight times.
About eighty-four thousand dollars?
Okay. So it's roughly eighty-four thousand dollars.
Eighty-four.
But that, that's not take into account benefits, but.
Right.
What was the amount?
The what, I'm sorry?
Roughly eighty-five thousand.
Benefits, because you have to pay FICA on that.
Right. You're right.
You have to pay retirement on that.
So add seventeen percent or something to that. So, and then on top of that, you still have your employee bumps. Well, not bumps, they're, you know, step raises.
Now you're pushing it to around a hundred roughly.
Yeah.
So around a hundred thousand dollars is what that three percent is. So does the council want to do that or not?
Can we save that for last?
Sure.
Okay.
So just any, any questions relating to the three percent, keep them to the last, all right?
And I'm just saying, they, they got three percent last year.
Okay. All right. Anything else on page two?
No, I don't have nothing on page two.
Page three.
But let me ask you one other question.
Okay.
On, on, and I'm going back to my first budget workshop. These are my questions that I had.
Okay.
On, and this is, and I know we're not on the revenue side, but I just want you to think about this. We did talk about, the housing authority used to do a pilot program for whatever, you know, and they stopped. And you, somebody's supposed to have been finding out why they stopped and can they started back.
Yeah, well, all we can do is ask them.
Yeah, I know, I know, but I would like, but just to, to work on that one.
It was the pilot in lieu of taxes.
There you go.
Payment, that's what pilot means.
Yeah.
Payment in lieu of taxes.
Yeah.
P I L T.
They'd give like five thousand, seven thousand or whatever. It kind of stopped with Mr. Schuman.
Right.
Was no longer executive director.
Okay. Anything on page three?
Oh, no, I'm good.
Anything on page four?
I have one question.
Okay.
Well, I think under total personnel cost, a hundred and thirty thousand.
On page four?
Yes.
Okay.
About two-thirds of the way down. Under the proposed increment.
Where are we?
Page four.
Page four, forty-three.
About two-thirds down.
On proposed increment, the last number besides zero is a hundred and thirty thousand one oh eight. What, what is that? Is that all the stuff we just discussed up until now?
Yeah. That, that has been taken out. All of that has been taken out now.
The hundred and thirty thousand is out?
That's your financial analyst, your finance clerk.
Everything but the firefighters. Is that what you're saying?
No, that's in the finance department. That was part of the list of eleven things that got taken out.
All right, so that's all. Thank you very much.
I'm writing a little list of the positions that I think would be essential because, I mean, I did speak to Ricky about this and to me, the finance department, aside from the fire department, is probably the most important department that the city has. We're still on page four and I would still like to consider that there be a finance clerk in there somewhere. You know, if he steps out and then you only have one person there, you only have one person there.
I agree.
And it, it might eliminate some of the expenses with the accounting services. I don't know.
It's going to come from contingency.
Yeah, so I don't know. I'm just saying, you know, if you could take out of the financial analyst and the finance clerk, Ricky, which one do you see as more of the hands-on, be able to do ledgers and all that and? I mean, I know Danielle does a lot of that right now and postings and things, so.
I think you're going to get more benefit out of a financial analyst.
Okay, they could do a budget?
They could put a budget together. They could do any type of analysis that is needed. The council would want, you know, as far as looking at anything within the budget, they would be able to pull that information together.
So when you have an audit, someone else can be helping with the audit and this person can focus on? Because in, this was my other question, when we did our audit, there was a ding on the, oh, shoot. I brought my little pamphlet with me on the audit report. There was an issue there on compliance and one of them was all of those issues regarding compliance in terms of the prior people there, not enough staff, I guess what it was. And there were timeliness of reviews.
Posting of all the bunches.
Postings, yeah, a lot of that stuff, particularly timeless of financial statement reporting, findings on questions of, of cost, on grant compliance. I mean, would this person be able to do grant compliance?
They would be able to review any documents related to grant compliance to make sure.
And the quarterly reports and all of that?
That they are done properly and, and are submitted accordingly.
So when you draft the job description, could you put in there the cash management as well? Or is it very particular to this type of position that they only do a certain thing?
Well, you can put a lot of specifics in there, but there's always that one clause that's included on most job descriptions at the very bottom that says, and other duties as assigned.
Right, okay. So being that the case, there was also taken out of the budget in there, what's it called? Training schools was completely eliminated. Actually, it went down to five hundred dollars. And I know that we're currently training people all the time and it just surprises me that that one would have been taken out. But would you consider that the training schools for the existing staff? Would that come out of training schools or would that come out of assistance in, in education? You know, would that be a separate budget? Because I want to make sure that they have sufficient money in there to do their training as well.
It's very important that your finance.
And it says so in the audit also, that they need training.
It's very important that your staff for your finance department go to training to be able to keep up with, not only to learn different concepts, but also to keep up with the changes that happen every year. And the one thing that we're guaranteed of is that every year the legislature is going to meet. And every year, they're going to make changes to the financial reporting requirements for cities and counties. I can tell you, there's a number of them for next year. One of them has to do with new reporting that has to be done. Believe this or not, whenever the audit is actually submitted to the state, you have to submit a copy of the audit to the auditor general as well as to the Department of Finance. And they are virtually side by side, but you've got to send a separate copy to each one of them. Otherwise, they don't recognize that they've received it. On top of that, there is a new requirement on the format of data that is submitted to the state that causes me a lot of concern relative to what our current software is capable of doing. Can it be done without new software? Yes. Would it require a significant effort? Yes. But anyway, I guess I'm getting sidetracked here a little bit, but yes, there does need to be training for your financial staff.
Okay, well, you have fifteen hundred. You did increment by five hundred.
There, there also is two of our staff members that will be trained on investments because that's one of the things we got dinged on in the audit.
Yes.
Was that there was no one with the city that received the required eight hours of training on investments.
I have.
Up until, up until the point in time that I came to, to work here, I had a certification on it.
Does he count? Because he did.
I have it every year.
Yeah, but it's not part of the, that you weren't dinged. It was the accounting. Anyway, I just wanted to make sure that that financial aspect was, if it's of huge concern in the audit, I think that we should pay attention to their.
I think that's a very good point too. That, that concerns me.
So you're proposing adding back in the fifty-four fifty for training?
I think, well, no, I think the training, I forgot what the amount was in here. I think communicate, it's the training schools, it's fifteen hundred. I mean, it's remained the same as it was.
Fifteen hundred. And then you were talking about a position.
Yeah, the position itself is the analyst, is what Ricky is saying. And that would be the fifty-nine. Am I correct?
Fifty-nine?
No, 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 I'm sorry.
Fifty-two, two hundred.
Okay. Okay. And by the way, is that a range or is that the pay? Or is that the highest amount? Or does it, can it be lower or...
That is estimated what would be spent if you hire someone, recognizing that you can't hire someone in the first week of the new fiscal year.
Right.
So would that be subject to a range? Absolutely. And you would, you would be looking for someone that has the skill sets necessary to be able to do it.
So would 52 be the highest at that point?
Probably 45 to 55, you know?
Yeah, well, I think it matters because then when you advertise it, you know who's going to be able to apply.
Right.
Well, they set the range. I mean, it's already a set range somewhere in the system. We don't set those. They do because we only set directors.
Did you set the range already?
I just want to make sure that there's enough money for that. Okay, well, you know...
It would be for next year, you know, the following year that would have to be, you know, taken into account.
Okay.
But what you're looking for is someone with a very specific set of skills. The people that have experience in governmental accounting, finance and budgeting.
It's a rare animal.
Very limited, okay? So you just understand that.
All right, so there's a proposed 53,700 increase there. Is, like, you're right, we don't need a motion for every single thing, as long as there's a positive move of the board.
Yeah, consensus, yeah.
Is anyone opposed to it? Start there. All right, moving on. That was on page four, so if there's nothing else on page four, we'll go to page five.
I just want to verify the 42,000 under accounting software and the 76,500.
Yep.
Were we moved?
For the other conversion, those are still out?
Yeah, that's gone.
Okay.
It's gone.
Page six.
Good.
Page seven.
Good.
If anybody has anything, just make sure you jump in. Page eight.
I'm good.
Page nine.
Wait a minute.
City attorney is not an employee.
Yeah, uh, page eight. Hold on, hold on a minute. Now, this is this new department, right? On page eight?
Facilities Management.
Yeah.
I believe that is, right, David?
Well, it's actually not called that. It's under Parks and Streets.
It's a new cost center, but not a new department.
Right.
So that one is out now? Because it's on the list?
No, he's just shifting...
Just the new person that I proposed for it is out.
Oh, the tech one?
Right.
Right.
The 42,000. Hold on a minute.
32,910.
So where's the facilities management on the chart?
I have it.
The guys are tired.
Well, it's not a current...
Says existing position for tech. And then you have a custodian.
Yeah, he was shifting employees from one cost center to another was the original plan. That obviously is not now taking place, right?
Correct.
Okay. That's why it wouldn't show up on that chart.
Where do they go now? If they're not going to be a new department, where do they go?
They stay where they were.
There's streets and parks right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else on page eight?
Yep.
Page nine.
Page nine.
Hey, wait a minute, wait a minute. I got one more on page eight.
You got me a little quicker.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Where is the, um, the custodian and maintenance tech? Is that what's still in there?
Yes.
That was 29,466, right?
Yes.
Yes. Is that...
That's one person? And how many people in this, will be in this department now?
I don't know that I'm establishing this department.
Well, then how many custodians are there? There would be two. There would be the new position and then the one that's existing, right?
Right.
Or no, those are proposed. But he's moving it around. So you took it out somewhere and then you stuck it over here.
We were moving people from parks and streets.
So you took their money as well and put it over here?
Correct.
Okay.
So they're not...
They're not in the department yet. They're just...
But they're in there as a proposed increment. Why would that...
Because I was asking for one new person in there.
But all of them are under proposed increments? You've got...
One was removed, the 32,000.
Yeah, but there are two others in there. You've got...
But they were taking...
Okay, existing position. I'm sorry, it's already in there. It's a position. I need to line these up. So there will be two people in that department? Or two people doing facility maintenance, I guess is what it comes down to. The one that you have and the one you're going to hire?
Correct.
Okay, that was my question. Two folks.
Anything else on page eight?
I had a question on uniforms. Just out of curiosity. I've seen uniforms on executive level. I've seen uniforms on this level as well. Are we buying uniforms for everybody?
I'm not sure.
They're...
I think most of, most of what we've been buying uniforms has been for the line employees. Fire department ordered some new stuff.
They're under city manager. Uniforms are under city manager. Not a lot. It's only $300, but they're in there. I'm just wondering.
That's polos for some of the office workers.
Office workers?
It's what?
On the executive facility, on the executive level or office? Who are they? I mean, who are office workers?
All the ladies in there right now that wear the polo shirts, that's what that's for.
Okay. So we're buying clothes now?
Well, you have been.
Okay. So we shall continue to do it, okay? Hmm?
I want a shirt.
All right, anything else on page nine?
On page nine?
Or anything else on page eight?
No, I'm finished on page eight.
Nine or before. Every number is that number and before. How about that?
I got one question on page nine.
All right, page nine.
Now, the $25,000 for the cost allocation study, that's been taken out, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, I'm finished.
Anything else on page nine?
That's, that's where the total 39,606 has been changing, with the 25,000.
Yes.
Okay, the other question?
Did that 20,000 come out of that payroll thing?
32 minutes.
Right here, on the, in the middle of page nine, it said software for payroll.
Software is gone.
Okay, so that's...
Software is out, yes.
Software is gone. Cost study is gone.
That 20,000 is out?
What about, there's a copy of somewhere. Is that, did we move, there was a copy in here for the council.
Yeah, they need a copy.
It's removed?
Yep.
Okay, we good.
Page 10.
Let me ask, I want to ask this again. There's 20,000 on rental leases and software, so is that the same thing and they're both out?
I got, I need to add back the budget.
We have existing software that we have to re-up, but there's no new software. There's been nothing new added.
You are currently paying 56,940 a year to use your software that is 34 years old.
Well, yeah, what are you doing with Westlaw? Are you going to go ahead and cancel that?
Yes.
Okay. Because I sent you an email about that. It's better just to go ahead and cancel it than to litigate with them.
Well, I think we had another year on the contract.
I think it was quite a year.
Okay. Can we, let me, let me follow up on that.
Yep.
So the $20,000 is to upgrade the equipment that we already have?
No, no, no. We're not upgrading anything. We just simply...
Yanked it out.
Right. We have to pay, we have to pay for the software that we use every year. We have to redo that again. But we're not doing anything new.
It is new software.
I got you. I got you.
Anything on page 10?
I just want to think, you might, let's, let's talk about that beforehand because see how much I've, time I've used on, because I use your site.
Right.
Instead of Saxon Gilmore's site. They bill for their site. So let's see what the difference is. And it might be paid actually, have, but I don't know. We can look at that now that we have a little experience of.
Okay.
Okay. Page 10.
You going to have enough money for that glass downstairs?
Already got it.
Okay.
It was in this year's budget.
All right.
Page 10.
Can, I would just want an explanation on the reserve for contingency for $300,000 on page 10.
That's my question. I didn't answer it.
That has been taken out.
Oh.
That's general fund. That's been taken out.
It's on your list of 11.
It's on your list here.
I can't keep up with that list.
Oh, yeah, I see it. Okay.
However, I would not be a good budget or finance person if I did not tell you that it's not a good idea to go into a new budget year without having a reserve for contingencies. Because there are things that come up during the year that you can't, cannot reasonably anticipate. And the only other option that you have is to, at that point, amend your budget to be able to bring additional fund balance into your budget.
Right.
And appropriate it for whatever comes up in the way of emergency or something that was not anticipated. And that currently requires two meetings to do that because it has to be done by ordinance.
Don't, won't the accountants make a comment on the fact, on their, their audit if you take out the contingency? Because they generally push the contingency pretty hard.
I'm sure they wouldn't hang us on it.
Does it have to be that much, though?
Doesn't have to be.
100,000?
It's better than zero.
Yeah.
Yep.
100?
Yep.
Okay, 100,000. Anything else on page 10? Page 11?
No.
Page 12?
Oh, is the three percent in here for the, by the way, is the car that we pay for the sheriff, is that part of this total operating cost? Or is that in a separate line item?
Separate line item.
Okay. They didn't come for expectation of more because they said they needed more bells and whistles on the new cars? And that the explorers have gone up to...
The answer is no.
Okay, just wondering. They didn't bring, okay, never mind.
Well, why are we paying for their, their cars?
That was an additional issue in their contract. They get a car and...
In the original agreement?
Yeah, they get one car a year.
I don't like it.
Okay.
For two officers to get a new car every year is ridiculous.
Right.
They're getting SUVs now.
We can renegotiate the next time around.
There you go.
Page 12? Page 13?
Well, okay.
I already answered my question on that one.
You still had a question?
No, you, we got to care about that one.
All right. Page 13?
Okay, just a question. Are we taking out the new code enforcement position?
They're, what page are they on? They're not, they're not here yet. We're still on page...
We're not there yet.
Page 13?
Oh, I thought you said 14. I apologize.
Page 14?
I have a question.
Okay.
14. The magistrate, is that one position or two position? Because we, don't we have two magistrates?
You have one.
Magistrates? No, one.
One.
Just one.
We can't have more than one legally.
You could have more than one.
Oh, we could?
Yeah, we can only, there can only be one.
They couldn't serve more than one city.
Oh, that's right.
Okay, so that's one.
So that makes them difficult, difficult to find because there's not a lot of those out there.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Page 14?
So are we taking out the code enforcement?
Can we put that on a hold list for right now? Like a hold? Right here, he's been removed, the new position. I just want to see if we can just kind of hang on to that a little bit.
We currently have a three percent increase on hold and we have a code enforcement.
Well, you know what, and then we can go through there and start doing stuff.
I'm just making a list.
Let me just suggest that you use the whole list that we have as your hold list. And you can discuss each of those items individually if you'd like to.
Is the code enforcement officer on that list?
Yes.
That's what I'm saying.
I must have lost my list.
Did I take it?
No, I don't think so. I think it's buried in there somewhere.
Okay.
Okay. Page 14, other than the code enforcement officer?
I have one, one question. And there, there seems to be a difference in the stuff that's on the memorandum, 11 items, and the stuff that's on this sheet that came out. Are we going by the original sheet or by this sheet that shows the...
Some of the, some of those items, some of those items had previously been taken out.
So are we going to go by this original one or by this one?
You can go by either one you wish.
You've got, you've got two sheets that have numbers on them, that have the actual figures on them.
I'm just going by the sheet that you gave to us separately.
I don't know what it was.
All right.
All right, I'm, I'm moving forward.
All right, 14. Anything else on 14?
No.
15?
I have a question on 15 in terms of demolition and repairs. Now, Ricky, this kind of bounces a little bit, but of the million dollars that we got in insurance payments from Irma, is that going to be rolled over? Is that being used as part of the budget? Or can any of that money be used for any demolition? Doesn't that just go into the general fund?
It goes into your fund balance.
Okay, so, but I'm, so it's tagged for those particular buildings. We can still move that money around?
Now, if there were specific repairs that were done, there will be year-end adjustments that are made to offset those expenses that were made during the year for those repairs.
And David, what's the expected demolition for 20,000? Or is it just there as a budget item?
That's for code enforcement whenever there's a building that has to be torn down.
And then like boarding places up and stuff like that? Does code enforcement do that? Or does the, does the streets department sometimes go in there and assist? I mean...
Both.
Okay. So that, they're not part of this 20?
Did I answer your question?
No, it's okay.
We want to be through by now.
Did you have something else?
No.
Page 15? Page 15?
No.
Okay, page 16?
No.
Just jump back if you don't mind to 15. There was a large increase to the base and the total for communication services, wireless communication, department management services. I mean, it doubled from the actuals. And I know we're not done with the year yet. But what accounts for that increase in communication services? Do you know?
Okay, that's under code enforcement.
Yeah.
And that's because of the additional code enforcement officers.
Okay.
You've got two things. They have cell phones plus they have their...
Computer?
Computers that are in their vehicles. And each one of those vehicles has connectivity to be able to send information back and forth to the office.
Okay, so if we end up, if we end up putting the code enforcement back in, then you're going to need training for that one person that we, that, if we put them back in, and that comes out to 1,040 per person? That you have in parentheses in there, on training schools?
There's a thousand each code.
Yeah. Right, so I mean, if we did the code enforcement, put them back in, you'll need that thousand?
That, that individual, if they do not currently have certification as a code enforcement officer, they'd have to go to school.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
I'm just saying, so are you saying it needs to go back in or that needs to be removed?